City Council Meeting for December 6th. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone. Jenny, if you can take the roll.
Councilmember Thorson.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Your furlong.
Here. Coram is present. This time, a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved, Your Honor.
Moved by Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thorson. Any discussion? If not, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
I know.
We don't have any presentations. At this time, we have the consent agenda, and I'll turn it over to City Manager Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. So on the consent agenda is, A, the November 15th, 2022 regular meeting minutes, November 15th, 2022 workshop minutes, general claims of $1,368,901.77, HRA claim, $2,519.77, 2023 city council meeting calendar, 2023 SCORE grant fund application approval, 2023 annual polling place designations, resolution approving acceptance of donations received through October, or in October of 2022, 2022 annual review of attendance of boards and commission members, towards zero death grant agreement, K is the electric department purchase of three three-phase fuse cabinets, and then electric department purchase of three 1,800-foot reels of 500 MCM aluminum high-voltage cable.
At this time, if a council member would like to pull one of the items, they can do so at this time. Councilmember Thorson?
E and I.
E and I?
Correct.
Anybody else? So E and I will be G and H under the City Business in Action items. Motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Cole.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? If not, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. This time, the meeting is open to the public. They do have a few people. First one is John Schmal, and if we can keep the comments limit to three minutes. Is that better?
Yeah.
Better? What's that?
It's better when it's off.
Thank you, John. Welcome.
Well, is this on, or is yours on?
Mine's on.
It's on, okay. I'm going to say that this is electric bill number two, and after what I spoke at the last meeting about the problem that existed, I became aware of through what Dan provided that the bill, there were 1,874 residents that received a notification that they had not paid their last electric bill, plus the fact that if they did not take care of it, they'd have their electricity turned off. So it wasn't just four people, as Dan had brought up. Three people called in, and me, who read the bill, actually read the bill. So I was looking for some kind of notification to the populace that there was a problem with their bill, and they should, and this is what it is, but they should ignore it. And the most earliest that could be was the newsletter that we get, just a little notification there. Nope, nope. We don't admit we make any mistakes. We don't do anything to say, hey, we might have screwed up, would you please, you know, kind of ignore it. So I can't believe that the city is so enamored with saying that we never make any mistakes, that they couldn't just notify the people. The second item is that, in reading, as I always do, the agenda and this cortisol in here that says you can't speak on subjects at this time that are on the agenda. Well, that's why we're here, is to deal with the agenda, and we can't talk about them. Is that correct?
I have not disallowed anyone to talk, not talk about the agenda. City Attorney, I don't know if that's a true statement or not, but I've never not allowed anyone to talk.
Well, then don't put it in there. Don't put it there if you're not going to allow it, because some of us read it and say, uh-oh.
It's completely up to the council's discretion, John, during a public hearing. Of course, they have to take public comment. Beyond that, what the open me-
I hear you.
Well, my mic is on. I can speak louder if you'd like. The open meeting law says that they have to allow public to attend, but it does not guarantee participation. So I think it is up to the council on items other than public hearing, whether they allow you to speak or not. So that is up to the council's prerogative.
And I've never disallowed it.
Okay, but you must be warned that you might be wasting your time, because it says you cannot speak on any item that is on the agenda.
Okay.
So you get to the point of coming up here and saying, I'd like to speak to something on the agenda. You can't. Bye-bye. And that's just the way it is.
Yep. We'll take note. Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Dave Nelson? Dave, can you hear me?
I can't hear back there. I don't know if they don't turn it up, or what?
Do we know what's going on, Carrie, or?
I wouldn't want to talk.
Okay. Okay, sorry.
Okay, that's fine. I only have three questions. I asked this before, but I never got an answer. Is this building paid for? Is it done? We don't have no more?
When did you ask? Did you ask me, or?
This is a while back.
Okay. I assume the building is close to being paid for, but I don't know that answer.
Is it not paid for?
I don't think so.
Okay, and the Public Works is not paid for, I'm taking?
That one may be. We're very close on that one.
Okay, what about Taj Mahal, the-
Taj Mahal?
The old community center? Are we still paying on that? That dead dinosaur?
Where are you going with this? I think we're done paying for that.
Okay, but we're still paying on this building and Public Works?
Yep.
Okay, that was my question, because people ask me, and I says, I don't have no idea. This is the first answer I got saying that they're not paid for. Do you know how many years yet we have to pay on this, roughly?
David, I don't have that in front of me.
We can look it up and give you that. Okay, I appreciate it, because-
And I apologize, because I just don't have that information in front of me.
It was just a question mark that I'm throwing out there.
Sure.
But I mean, the sooner we get this paid for, maybe our taxes will come down, too.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, David.
Mayor, to answer those questions, everything is paid for except for the city's public works facility, and in the truth and taxation presentation, this is, in taxation presentation, there is a slide in there that shows what our debt levies are and what the purposes of those debts are, and the only one that still has something is the new city public works.
So just the public works building?
And the final pay on that will be in 2025.
And I got Glenn. Welcome, Glenn and Caitlin?
Yes.
Oh, it sounds like we got, here we go.
Thank you.
Good and better.
Good evening, everyone.
Technology.
I can't believe I can't come to more of these. So we're just here because we're not going, we have conflict of schedule in two weeks, so we just want to come down and thank all you guys for, you know, last few years has been tough on everybody, and so just want to thank you for all your hard work. And especially, I want to thank my mom, Council Peter, Councilmember Peterson. I know you've put in a lot of work. I know me, Eric, and Ryan like to tease you a lot, especially, you know, upcoming holidays on your activity in city politics, but I know how hard you work, and I know how much effort you put in, and so me and Caitlin just want to say congratulations, and, yeah, and so we have a small gift for you. Sorry, we don't have enough gift for everybody else, but we have one for my mom, and so she's going to explain it better.
So I look hard for you, and that says, Grandma, congrats on 12 years of city service, and I can't wait to meet you in the early summer of 2023.
Oh!
Oh!
That's awesome. Take a picture. Get a picture.
Can't just stand behind her chair.
That's been child number eight, and I'll have more time.
Let's see. That's a good one. That's a good one.
Well, I think that was the best. Don't even have flashcards or something, you know.
Grandma!
Congratulations. Wow! That gets on. That's awesome. Congratulations. Congratulations. Is there anybody on Zoom?
Nobody with their hands raised, Mayor.
Okay. So it sounds like we do have a volume. Can everybody hear us back there? Good, thank you. So we do have a public hearing, and I will turn that over to City Manager Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. So, public hearing is truth and taxation hearing for the 2023 tax levy and budget, and I will turn that over to Finance Director Winnick.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, City Manager Frandl. There's a lot of information in the truth and taxation presentation. We'll try to go through it pretty quickly. Before I get into it, I kind of wanted to start with this piece. Going through this budget cycle and putting together this truth and taxation hearing, the first line of the Tale of Two Cities comes to my mind. It was the best of times, it was the worst of times. What I mean by that is that the property taxes for 2023 are going to have a significant impact on our residents here in the city of North St. Paul. That's the worst of times. The best of times is that we built a budget that is in the best interest of this organization. It hit on the goals that were identified by City Council, in meaning to funding our infrastructure, to look and funding our staff. It's a continuation of the commitment that this city council has made. Kind of want to bring up a couple of highlights since I have been here. We have, unfortunately, you know, in the past two years, increased our levy about $1 million. Where has that $1 million gone? Here's where the true commitment has really been. Our police has received $726,000 of that $1 million. Approximately 68% of that increase in levy, because they're fully supported by levy, has gone to our police. If we add in fire and inspections, that total now reaches up to 890,000 of that million. That's about $1 million and 50,000. It's 84%. So 84% of our levy increases has gone to public safety, and that's been the focus that this city council has really emphasized on, and has done a tremendous amount of work and commitment, and this city council needs to be recognized for that. It's a tough year, because there's going to be a significant increase in property taxes. I think the majority of residents will see between a 10% to 15% increase. Some will see higher, some will see lower, but that's kind of where it's going to fall out as far as the total property tax line with all of the taxing jurisdictions that are involved into there. We're in the second year of high inflation. We're in the midst of rising interest rates. We're facing an economic outlook that looks like we're going to be heading into a recession. These are all tough things to face for the residents. It's also a tough thing for the city to face. We, too, have experienced significantly high increases in our costs for operation. But again, this leadership here of the city council, in one of the workshops, one of the earlier workshops, really focused our goals, and our goals were to really look at our core services, make sure that we're having adequate staffing levels to be able to provide the extraordinary services that we have today, and we continue to do that into the future, and to make sure that we're doing an excellent job on our infrastructure, and this budget accomplishes that. But there's a cost that goes with that component to it. This city council asked and received a lot of information through the process. Our process with staff started in May of this year for the budget process. We officially kicked it off with the city council in the early part of July. We had a number of meetings, and we've met all the way through, not just on the general fund, but all of our enterprise funds, in looking at a lot of different stuff. We ran it all the way through in November here. We've looked at fund balances, we've looked at 10-year financial plans, we've looked at ways to increase revenue and to reduce costs. We have done a completely transparent process all the way through, all of our liams, everything has been published and put out there for all of our residents to see. Does it ease the impact? Absolutely not. And this is actually, this has been a tough for me to be here right now, giving this presentation, because I do know what the impact is going to be on our residents. So with that, and there's another component that is hard to kind of explain for the residents to understand. All revenues in the city, and that's part of the reason why we did one of the workshops in looking at ways to increase revenue and reduce costs, was our revenue, 75% of our revenue either comes from intergovernmental funds, intergovernmental, primarily in local government aid, or the property tax. That's 75%. On the flip side to it, 76% of our expenditures either go to public safety or streets and parks, things that are the core of what the city is all about. So with that, I'll start to go a little bit through the presentation that I have prepared. There's a lot of information, and I do want to kind of go through this a little quickly, because I want to give the public an opportunity to talk and ask questions, and also the city council. So, you know, the purpose of the truth and taxation is to provide an opportunity for residents to ask questions and learn about the budget and the tax levy. There's a lot of information that's included into this. Property taxes, kind of a complicated way of how it's all figured out. There's changes in the market values, the levies of the various taxing authorities, debt, special assessments, if there's voter-approved referendums, you know, changes in state and federal mandates, legislative changes. The assessor is the one who sets the market values. Our market values in the city have averaged about 15.5% increase, a lot due to interest rates being low at the beginning of 2022, because they're established on January 2nd of 2022. I think in the future, we're going to see those drop, probably to the tune of, you know, a good 20%. Part of what we're seeing with the economy. Will that hit for taxes payable in 2024 or 2025? It'll hit somewhere in between, you know, somewhere in there. I think we'll see some adjustments in '24, and then a remainder in 2025. The truth and taxation notice is sent out, and I kind of want to look at the truth and taxation notice, the front page to it. What it'll end up showing you is what your taxes are going to be for the various jurisdictions. And when you look at the North St. Paul line to it, you're going to see an increase, and the increase is going to be due to what we've done in the general fund, which the general fund includes our general operations and our debt service, which we had a 12.59% increase. What this city council did, in looking at a lot of the information, was made the decision not to levy anything for the HRA, and to keep the Economic Development Authority levy the same. When you combine all three of those levies, our overall impact will be 8.48% to our residents. So on the city line, you're going to see the 12.59%. In the other special taxing districts, which almost all residents should see, a decrease in that is due to the reduction in the HRA levy. Another component is, as market values increase in houses, you also lose the homestead market value exclusion. So you get a double whammy. I took a property tax notice that is pretty representative of our median value in the city of North St. Paul for the taxes payable in 2023, and you can see that there's an 8.5% increase for Ramsey County, a 13.9% increase for North St. Paul. You're seeing that the school district's increasing 8.7, the metropolitan special taxing district's increasing 3.9, and then you're seeing that big other special taxing districts being reduced almost 28%, and that's where you're seeing that HRA impact. Where does the dollar go? When you look at your property taxes, 34% is going to Ramsey County, 32% is going to the school district, 30% is going to the city of North St. Paul, and forward to some of those other taxing authorities. Now, this year that hasn't been included in the truth and taxation notice is the supplemental budget information, which it'll actually tell you where the expenditures are going, and does a comparison from the current year of 2022 to the proposed of 2023. Excellent information for the residents to see. Again, our values, our median residential home value has increased from 237,000 to 200, almost 274,000. So we're seeing a significant increase in the market values. This slide here will show you how the changes have occurred in residential apartments, commercial and industrial, and everything has moved upwards. The levy highlights. The city's levy for 2023 is, like I had mentioned before, 12.59% increase, or $732,000 increase from the 2022. To remind everybody, in 2022, we did a 5.99% levy increase. We have proposed a 0% or 100% decrease in the HRA levy, and the EDA to remain the same level as 2022. Some of the budget highlights, and you can kind of see here where some of the, you know, kind of explains the cost changes that have occurred. We do have the addition of five staff that we're including into here, two of which are in public safety, some administrative positions, public for the streets, street maintenance. Staff additions are approximately $424,000 increase. Coal, a step benefit increases per union contract, 162,000. We got hit with a medical insurance increase at the last minute of $139,000. We had a metro high net increase of 54,000. We were able to increase the expenditures and revenue side on inspections, 222,000. We have some parks capital increase, part of our infrastructure, of approximately 98,000. Street maintenance increase of approximately 60, again, looking at that infrastructure. On our revenue side, you can see the offset of the inspections increase, where we can increase our revenues, almost $300,000. Intergovernmentals increase 55, and other taxes 85. Unfortunately, the remainder of that ends up having to come from our property taxes. But this shows, again, the city council's continued commitment to the city-operated public safety. We are now above the beginning of the pandemic in 2020 as far as staffing levels, and it continues a balanced budget. This slide will kind of show the illustration of the changes from '22 to '23, and again, you're seeing where the city's levy is going up to 12.59%, HRA is being zeroed out, EDA is staying the same. The total of all three levies is an 8.48% increase from 2022. In our general fund, here's a snapshot of where the revenues and expenditures, I'm kind of, these are the numbers, I'm going to kind of go to more of the graphs. We're also seeing where our staffing levels have changed over since 2019 to 2023. Again, this depiction of this graph here shows where our revenues are at, where, you know, 56.5% is property taxes, 9% is other funding sources. What's that other funding sources? That's transfers from our enterprise funds, to the tune of $820,000. Without that transfer from 2022, every $58,000 equates to a 1% levy increase. Without that $820,000, we would end up having to increase our levy an additional 14%. And then the intergovernmental revenue is approximately 18%. When we look at our budgets, our personnel costs are our biggest category, at 63%, followed by contractual services at 28%. On the expenditures by a department, you can see, again, almost 42% is to police, you know, close to 14% is for fire and enforcement. So again, you know, we're looking at a significant part that's being dedicated to the city's public safety. This is the, shows where our debt. We have a very slight increase or change in our debt. We've done a very good job of our debt planning. If you remember, in the '22 budget, we refunded some debt. This is actually including the street project and the bonding that we did earlier this year, and we're only seeing an approximate $7,000 increase. With on the horizon, again, as I spoke earlier to one of the citizens' questions, that we will see a reduction in 2025 of the 2016B bonds. So what's this, what kind of impact does this have when I look at from the city's portion? And I ran a couple of scenarios. If there's no value change with 8.48% total levy, they would see a reduction in the city's property taxes of approximately 6%. If they have the median value increase with the levy that's being proposed, they would see approximately a 10% increase. If they have a 7.3% increase in market value, they would see a 1.7% increase bottom line. And then if you go on the other side, and you have somebody who has like a 17% increase in their market value, they'd see a 12% increase. The HRA and the EDA levies, again, the HRA- The HRA and the EDA levies, again, the HRA levy, we are not proposing to levy anything for it here in 2023. And the EDA will stay the same at its current level. Here, this slide here shows you all of the levy increases for the cities and townships within Ramsey County. I believe the overall average is 12.8% levy increase. And you can see they've got from Gem Lake at a 34% increase down to Falcon Heights, which is at a 4.8%. You can see the city of North St. Paul is a little bit on the higher than average side to it as far as the cities at that 12.59%. But then again, we reduce some others, other components to our levy that aren't reflected in this part to it to bring it down to that 8.48% overall levy. This depiction here will show you where the ranges of what the increases will be. On that, again, on that median value home, you should see an approximate 10% increase. You'll see, you know, the county will be increasing 10%, the city 15%, the schools 10%, and that other, and that's where the HRA is included, are reducing approximately 10%. But the total impact to our residents is it would be a 10% increase. This kind of shows of the parcels, what's kind of a range of where they'll end up being as far as an increase in their taxes and, you know, a decrease or zero. It's a small number of 228 of our 3,750 parcels that would end up seeing a decrease. The majority are going to fall into a zero to 10, really more towards the 10% of approximately 1,800. 10 to 20%, we'll see 13. We'll see those that will see a 10 to 20% increase. It'll affect approximately, you know, 1,380 parcels. Nothing to look lightly at. This is having an impact on our residents. If any of our residents have any questions regarding their assessed values, they can always call the Ramsey County Assessor's Office. There's the number. We can also, there's a link that's attached that they can go to their webpage. There are some opportunities or programs that can help reduce the property taxes. And so this is really good information for residents to look at. This one in particular, the homestead deadlines and exclusion programs, you know, maybe, you know, something for somebody to look at too. So with that, I'm going to wrap it up and I want to hear from citizens. I know this is a huge impact. And want to hear from city council comments, thoughts as we move forward here.
Why don't we go ahead and open up the public hearing at this time? And we'll save our questions for that, for the council after that. So at this time, at, time is at 7:03, we'll open the public hearing up. And so at this time, if any resident would like to come up and speak in regards to the taxation, we also have our finance director here to be able to answer your questions. Anybody would like to come up? Don't be shy. Welcome. Welcome.
I suppose I have to say my name, Naomi and Rocky Vandal. And we're here because our property taxes are going up about 30%. So that is quite a bit, a lot. And we've lived here over 20 years. And we're going to concern about it because first of all, we don't have a chow in the school system anymore. We haven't seen that many services. We have a tree on the boulevard that belongs to the city, and the city has yet to come and trim it. 20 kids get picked up every school day. And there's a lot of dead branches on that side, so we're concerned about it. The city says, hey, we're going to take care of it. We haven't seen it. We do our part of keeping the fire hydrant clean, the storm drains clean. I mean, we do our part. We haven't seen the city.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
You know, we even have it for the kids. We clean it and every, I mean, we have a pretty clean yard and we've done a lot of updates. We love it here, but to see an increase of almost 30% is just ridiculous.
Right. So I would, you know, 30%, it's not all city. It's not the all city part.
I think I calculated approximately 28% for the city.
Well, I would, you know, I don't know if we can look at your tax bill and, you know, work with their.
So I would assume and be pretty close with this that your market value had to have increased probably 25 to 30% from 2022. And that's probably your biggest driving factor. So you're on the end where a median value home is increasing 15% and you would have seen approximately a total 10% increase in your property taxes. You're on the very outside edge that your values went up significantly more than the median value.
I'd like to challenge that. I don't think it's justified now. Some of you know what I do for a living, and I'm also a businessman. For the years that I've been here, I've heard we got to build our tax base. I get that. That's good business. We have all the new apartments in the city. We have all these things going on in the city. You guys have been doing a great job of managing it. But to push it on to the residents who are also contributors to society and the city, I feel is unjustified. Now, realize that there's a zero point baseline of property taxes. Frankly, I think it's just a revenue generator that's kind of hidden underneath the property, what the value is worth. I'm sorry. Excuse me. So I challenge the validity of those numbers.
Of the values?
Yeah.
And that's where you'll need to reach out to the Ramsey County Assessor's Office? They're the ones who determine those values?
I was at the Ramsey County meeting in Roseville recently. There's a lot of people that are suffering. We're just getting over the COVID thing.
Absolutely.
And it seems like it's something or finding a reason to capitalize on that just to put a more burden on the people. There's something wrong with the equation. It's not balancing out. We have a lot of resources in this city, and it's a great city. But to continue to pass those extra burdens on to the residents, I feel is unjustified. Enough said.
Thanks, Rocky. Thanks for all you do. Anybody else? I don't have a timer on you.
You've got it? No, you can't on hearings. You can listen to me until the cows come home. Never knew that. Away we go. We'll call the cows. John Schmal, 2750 Chisholm Avenue. I guess it's off subject, but there's even a bigger monster in the house, and that is the fee schedule. And there's no input requested from the city on fee schedule. Take, for example, electric. XL is just going through about a year and a half worth of hearings in order to deal with the increase. What do we do in North St. Paul? This is it. Aye, 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 nay, would be, and nothing. No hearings on fee schedule. Nothing. We don't get to say anything because there's no hearings on it. I think that's wrong. Thank you.
Anybody else? Donald?
Donald Benick. This isn't really referring to this budget here, but a few years ago, they raised evaluations about $30,000, the highest in Ramsey County for North St. Paul, average of 16 something percent. My taxes went up over $600. I filed for that over whatever, over the 10% and stuff, and they denied it because they thought there was improvements on the property. There was never no improvements on the property. But they raised it 30,000, I think it was, or something in that area.
Market value went up 30,000?
Yep. Everybody's went up. It went up on an average of 16, they said.
And again, Dan, we don't have control over that, do we? We don't have control over the market value.
No, we don't. I mean, that's purely the county auditor, a county assessor's office that makes that determination. And I know a lot of, I mean, we can see it again this year, you know, seeing the median value going up 15.5. And we just heard, you know, another big significant increase in the market value. A lot of it, and I'm not going to say it was justified or not, but they're sold. The county assessor's office is required by statute to do, it's called a quartile. In other words, once every four years, they're supposed to do an assessment of a property. Unfortunately, this past year for, which is going into the property taxes in 2023, a large part of North St. Paul was reevaluated. And it was hitting at a time where we saw housing market. Houses were going through the roof. Because, yeah, it was out of whack. That will be getting adjusted. And, but yes, the results are astronomical as far as how market values went up.
What I was referring to is they thought I had improvements on the property, and there's that 10% or 12% deal there. Well, they denied it. Well, they went through the thing and they took their thing. There was no improvement, so I did get the money finally. Well, good. It was a couple of years.
And again, that's Ramsey County doing that. That's not the city doing it.
But it was evaluations that went up just in North St. Paul alone, 16% of that year. It was about two, three years ago or four years. I'm not remembering.
Right. But we don't set those market values.
I know. I know you don't.
Right.
I don't know about the last three years because you know what happened to me three years ago, so.
I'm glad you're here.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Donald. Anybody else? That will close the public hearing at 7:11. Did I say that right? So at this time, any questions for Dan from the council? Councilmember Thorson.
Yeah, you had mentioned, what was roughly the dollar amount of a 1% levy increase? What was that number you had stated?
$58,000 if we're looking at it from the 2022, yes.
I had a note from our October 18th workshop that was roughly 60,000, so.
Yeah, rounded it, yeah.
Okay. And then you also made a comment about if something, if some revenue source changed, we would have to raise the levy, whatever it was, an additional 15%. But that's assuming that we're going to continue spending the current amounts. I mean, I think the example most people can relate to is if your household income decreases, you make adjustments to your spending to live within your means. And, you know, in my opinion, that's kind of a foreign idea as far as government's concerned. It's always just spend, spend, spend. But, you know, if we're faced with some difficult budgetary issues, you know, naturally, we would have to look at reductions in spending. So that's always an option that we have as a council. But generally, it's not one that's discussed. I just wanted to point that out for people in attendance. And then, you know, at some point, we're going to vote on this. So I'll just state now why I intend to vote against the general fund levy. What we've got going on here tonight is we're obligated as a city to pass a balanced budget. And very rarely does that at the end of the year do we spend exactly what we budgeted. In some cases, we spend more than we budgeted, and we're supposed to make amendments to the budget for that. But in cases where we take in more money than we spend, it's a surplus. And we have a city policy that states that that surplus money will be split between our street improvement projects fund and our equipment funds. And I requested as far back as we had available, which was 2014, some figures on where did we end up? And I'm just going to read these quick because this wasn't included in the budget information. But in 2014, we had a $243,000 shortfall. In 2015, we had a $300,000 surplus, and I'm just rounding these to whole numbers. 2016, a $442,000 surplus. 2017, $167,000 surplus. 2018, $194,000 surplus. 2019, a $521,000 surplus. 2020, a $487,000 surplus. Excuse me. And in 2021, we had an $844,000 surplus. And you total that up, that's $2,978,000 of surplus money that we've taken in more than what we had budgeted to spend. And at our October workshop, we were looking at a projection at the end of this year of roughly having about $159,000 surplus. So, you know, you look at that and you can say, well, that helps us build our fund balances and it helps us keep our levies low. Or, you know, I think the goal is to have our levies pretty straight and so we don't see these wild swings. But, you know, to me, you know, we're on pace to collect a heck of a lot more money than we're budgeted to spend. And, you know, you compound that too with, like John Schmal mentioned, we're only talking about the general fund levy here. We have utility rates that we approve, and those are increasing. And there's reasons for why we're increasing those is because we have a lot facing our infrastructure. It's something that's been neglected for many years, and we got a late start on that. And we're continuing to do that. But, you know, in times like this, when we're looking at a significant levy increase, significant increases to our fees, I'm glad that you had in your presentation acknowledged the issues that are facing our country as a whole with the recession because that has been absent in our conversations of our budget discussions. And, you know, but it's a reality that people face. So, you know, at this point, you know, I kind of, I never quite understood why we have these truth and taxation meetings the day we're going to approve the levies. Because it kind of seems like there's not someone who's going to come up here and make a comment that we haven't really discussed or thought of. It just seems like, you know, we've been, like our finance director stated, discussions have started in May. We've had many workshops, many presentations. You know, it's more of a formality. But at one point earlier, I think it was actually last year, there was discussion by councilmember Peterson about forming a budget advisory committee. I really hope that we do that, and the next council mayor will look to do that to get more engagement from the public and residents. Kind of like how John points out too, he attends these budget workshops, and there's not a portion that's open to the public to talk. And a lot of the workshops that we've had have been pretty full of presentations and other topics. And we're always up against the clock, and we don't really have much time to have discussion. So, excuse me. So, you know, those are just kind of the main reasons why I don't feel comfortable voting to support a levy increase and the fee increases. So that's why I'm going to be voting no tonight, with the exception of the HRA. I'll be happy to vote yes on a 0% levy increase for that.
So when we've done the budget, you know, every year that we do the budget, it's anticipation that we're balancing the budget. We're doing a zero, you know, zero budget or, you know, and at the end of the year, it does go to those accounts that the use.
So, you know, we can look at the fund balance that we just, the new fund balance policy that we just adopted. I believe that language is taken out now. So last year's did not go anywhere. It remained in the fund balance of the general fund. And we switched the fund balance minimum from a 35% to a minimum 40% trying to strive to get 50%. Reason for that is because it gives you a better bond rating, which then ends up, you know, reducing your debt levy over time.
As a finance director, you know, you're anticipating that it's a balanced budget. And at the end of the year.
Correct. Correct.
You know, we don't want to be in the negative every year. We want to be in the positive.
Correct.
And, you know, what is a good number to be in the positive? Is it right at the zero or is it, you know, every year it's going to be different as councilmember Thorson had mentioned? So it's.
And there's, and, and I can, and I can only speak to.
We're not the finance people.
No.
We're not the ones.
I can only speak to the time that I, that I have been here. Like last year, we had a significant increase, a lot of that, as, as was presented to city council in the workshop, was due to the, the increase in permits. That is, is something that is very hard to predict. This budget here increases that revenue much, very, probably doubles the revenue than we've had in the past. There's a risk. This year, we've got a lot of revenue from permits, but again, barring an act of God that created this hailstorm that replaced virtually every roof in the city, we would have never generated that much in, in permits. And the year before was a lot to do with the development that was happening on, in the downtown area.
There's a lot of things that are out of our control.
That are out of our control, so.
Within the budget.
Yeah, so when we prepare a budget, you know, all of the department heads are doing what they anticipate that they're going to be spending, all of that is shared with, with city council. One thing that we do have to, have to remember that the fund balance policy of how it is written is that it needs to be now a minimum of forty percent of the subsequent budget. So in other words, it needs to be forty percent of what is the 2023 budget. If the budget goes up, there's a percentile that it has to go up. So in essence, you have, to, to meet that minimum, if you're at forty, to meet forty the next year, you have to have a surplus. We don't budget for it, so we hope that that's the results that'll end up coming, but not to the magnitude that councilmember Thorson was saying in some of the past numbers. And again, in the workshop, when we looked at our expenditure side, taking out the permitting revenue side, looking at, when we were looking at our pure expenditure, I think we were, we were quite down, I, I can't remember the exact figure, I think we were somewhere maybe in about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and, about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars that we had in, in expenditure savings in the general fund. So it was really generated by the increase in permitting.
Any questions on this end? So at this time, I'll turn it over to city manager Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. City business action items, first up is the 2023 municipal fee schedule and rates ordinance. And Dan has that again, so Director Winnick.
Mayor, councilmembers, and city manager Frandl. What, our next item is the, the fee schedules? Yes? Yeah. So the next item is our 2023 municipal fee schedules and rates. This has been presented to city council, discussed. The, there was two kind of outstanding items, I believe there's two. One, one was the discussion of the potential for the shelters in the parks, rental rates being cut in half. My understanding from staff at the last Parks and Rec Commission meeting was that the determin, the decision was made to keep that the same as it was in 2022 and not have the half days and the half rental rates. So it's reflected as the same as it was in 2022. The other item that was discussed was our ball field rental. And inner ball field rental, the, my understanding was that nonprofits were not being charged at all for ball field rentals, have confirmed that with staff, that that is what was occurring. I could not find any city council authorization that allowed that to happen. So staff does know now that moving into the future that there will be charging in the same as, as that is included in our fee schedule and rate, and utility rates that, that is being presented today. The more significant, which councilmember Thorson had spoke of, this also includes our utility rates, and so there's, two of our utilities will, are, right now are being proposed to have increases, both the electric rate and the wastewater rate, and the increase is two point seven five percent over 2022.
Any questions on the fee schedule? Councilmember Thorson.
So how does that happen then? Like, how does something like a nonprofit not paying for a fee rental that is established in our fee schedule, how does that happen if council didn't authorize it?
Councilmember Thorson, I can't answer that. I would have to, you know, I, I don't know how that ever developed. You know, it's underneath the community development section, and, and I don't know why or how that conversation came about and why a determination was made. It should not have been made without a city council approval.
And then as this was going on, what sort of verification is going on? And, you know, if, if I have a beer league that I want to come and rent the fields and I see that, or I hear that nonprofits don't get charged, and I just say, oh yeah, I'm a Thorson's Drinking Team 2022 or a nonprofit. I mean, is there any, is there any, is there like a form that you fill out that where you need to give, provide tax ID numbers? Is there, is someone going onto the Secretary of State's website and verifying if what I'm saying is true?
And again, councilmember Thorson, I can't answer that question. I definitely can look into it, but I do want you to know that, that practice will not be occurring moving into the future.
Okay.
Any question in regards to the, over the phone credit card fee? It's a, it's a fee of twenty dollars.
Correct.
Is that a pass-through fee from our credit card processor that they charge twenty dollars? I mean, if, what is that mainly for? Is it billing, any type of billing?
We do get a charge from, from our credit card company, many times over the phone.
Thinking like a five dollar, you know, is there ever a five dollar charge and we charge them twenty?
And that's part, part of, you know, I'm totally anticipating and, and mayor and councilmembers are aware, am currently looking at and have gotten some proposals from other credit card companies to try to be able to reduce the costs to the city. So I'm anticipating that we will see some reductions and we will be adjusting some of these fees that are in here coming into 2023. Once we get the proposals, do the analysis, and then I'll bring a recommendation to city council to approve, and we will be making, you know, kind of an, an amendment to this fee schedule once we, we've get those determinate, determined.
Any other questions? If not, second here. Motion is to ordinance adopting the 2023 municipal fee schedule and utility rates.
So moved, Your Honor.
Moved by councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Second by councilmember Cole. Any discussion? If not, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Motion carries. City manager Frandl.
Next up is the 2023 budget and levy overview, including both general fund, HRA, and EDA. Turn that back over to finance director Winnick.
Yes, as, I, I do want to start out by saying I, I agree with a comment that councilmember Thorson had said that it would be my preference, well, two comments that he said. One, I think we've already discussed that I really do think that we should have a budget committee in, in some way, shape, or form that's working. It just enhances our overall transparency and involvement of the residents and.
We had talked about that earlier.
We've talked about that, yes. So I think we should look at establishing that.
Yep.
The second comment, part to it is, is that I do agree that we should not be passing our levies the same night that we have a truth in taxation, because I think we do need to, to reflect upon the voice of our residents in making, before we make our final decisions.
Does every city do that? Because it's all, with, as far as I know, that's, that's the way we've always done it. And I don't know if that's.
Does everyone do it? I, I've seen it both ways. I was at a meeting last night where they did the hearing, took in the information, and I think they'll address the levy at their next meeting. I've certainly seen it where you do exactly as you're proposing to tonight. You have your hearing, the idea being, this isn't the first time you've addressed the numbers. You have had meetings on it that were open to the public and such. So you, you can do it either way. Dan, what I can't remember is what the window in terms of having the TNT hearing is statutorily, what time we have to have it or when it should occur, but.
Yeah, it's approximately, I think the, the window is, I think, I'm just going to throw something like November twenty-seventh-ish to December ninth.
That's.
So that's why we had to have the truth in taxation on this city council meeting. It's, we could have potentially delayed the actual approval until the following city council meeting for this year on the twentieth. And, and that's just something to look at, you know, in the future. But again, we have discussed all of these over and over again in different workshops, but it's still, it, it's, I think, more of an, an optic type of component to it that we really do need to respect the input that we receive from our fine residents, so.
And I think the council would be totally open to it.
I absolutely, yeah.
With, you know, with the finance director, you know, directing us to get those numbers in place and then having, you know, that public hearing at some point, so. And the new council, some of it's sitting behind us, so I'm sure they're hearing that. So.
So before you are, are three items for the 2023. It's the final general fund budget and levy, the final HRA levy, and the final EDA levy, and there's resolutions that are attached. These resolutions, once they're approved, they're certified to Ramsey County, and those certifications need to occur to Ramsey County by, by December twenty-eighth.
Okay, so the first resolution is resolution adopting the final 2023 general fund budget and setting the final 2023 general purpose and debt service levies. Is there a motion?
So moved, Your Honor.
Moved by councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Second by councilmember Cole. Any discussion? If not, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Motion carries. The second one is resolution adopting the final 2023 tax levy for the North St. Paul Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by councilmember Wong.
Second.
Second by councilmember Cole. Any discussion? If not, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. The last one is resolution adopting the final 2023 tax levy for the North St. Paul Economic Development Authority.
So moved.
Moved by councilmember Cole.
Second.
Second by councilmember Wong. Any discussion? If not, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Motion carries. City manager Frandl.
Next item in the city business action items is the adoption of the 2023 city non-levy budgets. Again, turn it back over to Director Winnick, please.
Mayor and, and councilmembers and city manager Frandl, this action item is to adopt the 2023 city non-levy budgets. That includes, includes our enterprise funds and our internal service funds and special revenue funds that we budget. We've had discussion on these. We've looked at the financial plans are, on those, again, part of the fee and fee schedule, two of these enterprise funds, the electric and the wastewater, will be seeing a two point seven five percent rate increase. And so it's changed in the revenues that you're seeing in those two funds. Again, as we saw with the levy and these non-levy budgets, all of the backup documentation, even down to line items, are attached and are made public here and will be put onto our website after approval.
Any questions for Dan on that? If not, the motion is for a resolution approving the 2023 non-levy budgets.
So moved.
Moved by councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Second by councilmember Cole. Any discussion? If not, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Motion carries. City manager Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up on the city business action items is the adoption of the 2023 to 2032 capital improvement plan. We have city engineer Morgan Dolly here to speak to our capital plan. Were you going to talk on that? Is that Dan? Dan, sorry, back to you.
Welcome, Dan.
It's good to be, good to be with you. Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, and city manager Frandl. We've reviewed the capital improvement plan. There are a couple of, of changes that have occurred since you last saw this. One, we had a question that was raised by councilmember Wong regarding the police vehicle replacement. They were doing four every time they were doing their replacement. Councilmember Wong made the suggestion, could they offset that? And so we, I've talked to the police chief, and he was very, very much in agreement, so we moved it to two vehicles to kind of offset that change. In addition, there's been some adjustments to the parks, playground and paths tab and open space section to better align with the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So we wanted to make sure that we were in concert with, with that. And then also, the street and utility projects have been reprioritized. In particular, there was a rearrangement of some projects, you know, from the year, because we won't be bonding for those until 2025, 27, 29. There was a rearrangement and prioritization of moving some of them up and moving the one in 2025 that had to, to do with not the section of Seventh Street that we're doing now, but to move it out to 2029 and to move up some other sections that had been deferred and pushed out that were supposed to have been done, but were pushed out due to some other priorities in past years. So we've moved that up to 2025. Those were the changes that were in there. This capital improvement plan, in addition to our discussions here at city council, were also put in front of the Parks and Recreation Committee for review. And that occurred on October twenty-sixth and was approved with the recommendation to pass this along, to pass this. And then on November third, to the planning commission reviewed the CIP and approved it, that it complies with the 2040 comprehensive plan. So I'll take any questions. There is a, a resolution here that does need to be approved.
Any questions for Dan? If not, the motion is for a resolution adopting the revised, I got revised, there's a typo there, revised 2023 to 2032 capital improvement plan.
So moved.
Moved by councilmember Thorson. Or second? Second by councilmember Peterson. Any discussion? Second by Councilmember Peterson. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. City Manager Frandl.
Next up is the 2022 MINDOT Active Transportation Grant Program. Looking for a resolution of support, and this is for sidewalk on the north side of 11th Avenue from McKnight Road down to Ariel Street. We have City Engineer Morgan Dolly to speak to that.
Welcome, Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This item before you here is a resolution included in your packet, simply identifying support for an application for grant funds that are identified by MINDOT and also by state statute dedicated for pedestrian bicycle improvements throughout the state. It's a grant solicitation called the Active Transportation Grant that's out right now, identifying $3.5 million for improvements in 2023, 2024. The funds would have to be expended before the end of 2024. It was a, a solicitation for grant dollars or an opportunity for potential funding for projects that aren't currently in our CAP that staff took a look at and in reviewing the comprehensive plan identified a sidewalk connection project that had been discussed by council previously in 2015, namely a sidewalk on the north side of 11th Avenue between McKnight Road and Ariel Street. So not only was it previously considered and not pursued in 2015 for lack of funds at that time, but also if it were to be constructed, it would provide a logical pedestrian connection between sidewalks on McKnight Road, newly constructed sidewalks on Ariel Street, and the city of Maplewood also installed in 2022 a sidewalk connection on the north side of 11th Avenue from Ariel Street to, and some of the residential areas that they have there on the corner of 11th and Ariel to White Bear Avenue as well, too. So this would potentially, if constructed, provide some opportunities for non-motorized populations to move in and around the area between residential and recreational areas and commercial areas, too. And as discussed in 2015, having sidewalks on both sides of 11th Avenue provides some benefits to pedestrians and also transit riders. The westbound transit stops on 11th Avenue, the only way to get to them currently would be to walk across four lanes of traffic on 11th.
Is there a map you can put up so people can see that?
Share. Did you unshare your presentation? Oh, you got it, you got the packet. There we go. That's, thank you, Dan. There's the map. So the, again, connection would be on the north side, 11th Avenue between McKnight Road and Ariel Street. The funding request is for $500,000, a conservative estimate of what it would take to construct that sidewalk, ADA improvements at the connections, and kind of making it fairly wide, I guess, as adjacent to a commercial street is just over $500,000 at approximately $580,000. Now, you know, that's not necessarily what the final cost would be, but just in terms of preliminary planning estimate to be able to submit an application, if there were an overage, that would be the responsibility of the city. And indirect costs, so like engineering, contract administration, materials testing, that would also be the responsibility of the city. But there is no match for the construction dollars. So that does make it kind of an appealing grant solicitation to go for, that it would be, if we were selected, 100% of the construction amount up to that $500,000 would be funded by the state. We're getting to this point because we just, before we even brought it to council, there was an opportunity to submit a letter of intent just to see if it, you know, if the state thought it was a good project, and they came back with a favorable response. So here we are with a resolution of support for council consideration, which is a requirement to apply. So if the council didn't approve this resolution, we would not be moving forward with an application. We should find out early in 2023, you know, January, February timeframe, if we were selected and successful. And with that, I don't have anything else to add, other than, again, we consulted the comprehensive plan, and this connection is identified within the 2040 comp plan as a tier one sidewalk improvement project. The city council and planning commission and those that contributed to the, the comp plan at that time had kind of three tiers or priorities of sidewalk projects, and this particular one fell in the, the top tier, which is one of the reasons why staff thought it, it might fit the, the criteria well. So with that, I'll stand for any questions council might have before consideration on the resolution.
Is there a bus stop on that side of the street?
There's at least one and possibly two, I believe. There were three, and we worked with Metro Transit back in 2014, 2015 to evaluate if some of those bus stops were not used. And based on the ridership counts at that time, they did take one out to try to minimize the number of people that might be just walking across traffic mid-block there. So I think there's, I think there's two, one at Ariel Street and one potentially in the, the middle there.
I think the one I'm thinking of, there is no, it's just a sign, you know.
Correct. So there's no walk there.
There's no walk, there's just dirt, there's no bench or nothing. Would they improve that then with the, with the sidewalk?
We would include, if, if this grant were provided to the city, that kind of concrete pad or ability to connect the sidewalk to something that would provide a, a location where people could get on the bus at that point could be included easily with the project and would be grant eligible as well.
You have other questions for Morgan?
No, just thank you for submitting for that grant. I think we've talked a lot about, you know, ways to save money, and this is certainly a way to, you know, help with, with the budget. So thank you.
So, motion is a resolution of support for the City of North St. Paul grant application submittal for the 2022 MINDOT Active Transportation Grant Program.
So moved, Your Honor.
By Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Council, uh, second by Councilmember Cole. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Morgan. Are you up, next one?
Do you want to intro it, or should I just keep rolling?
Go ahead.
Okay. The next item before you for city business, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, is just a, a final pay voucher. Actually, there's only one pay voucher. So approving pay voucher one and final for the 2022 crack ceiling, which is conducted as part of regular street maintenance. On the screen here, we have just a map of the areas that were covered here. Crack ceiling is something that the city has been doing on a regular basis. Approximately every three to five years is recommended for newer roads that have been reconstructed or have had other kind of prior improvements like mills, mill and overlay, that sort of thing. The budgeted amount was $70,000. The awarded contract was in the amount of $83,100, but staff worked with a contractor to keep the final payment under, about 5% under the budgeted amount. So the final payment is in the amount of $66,375. And again, as I mentioned, the map is up on the screen right now. We did have to subtract a couple segments to reduce what we had originally put out there for bid, but not substantially. And they were roadways that staff thought were going to be okay. They were included originally, but they'll, they'll be okay until the next time that this is conducted, probably in the next two to three years for crack ceiling. So with that, I'll stand for any questions. We, there is a resolution, yes, we do have a resolution for just council consideration to approve pay voucher one and final the contract for this particular project. I'll stand for.
Any questions from Morgan? If not, I, I do have a cute story. I was in one of the areas, and these two ladies were walking on the street, and they stopped and they started peeling the white stuff, you know. And I stopped and I said, do you know what that is? And they said, no. And I said, it's toilet paper. And they looked at me going, are you kidding? I went, no, Morgan told me. They actually use toilet paper.
I don't think they use Charmin, but it is toilet paper.
Two ply, so, cute story. The motion is for a resolution authorizing final payment for the 2022 crack ceiling project.
So moved, Your Honor.
Moved by Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thorson. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. City Manager Frandl.
Next item up is what was pulled down from the consent agenda, which first up is the 2023 city council meeting calendar.
Yeah, I just, I pulled that item and then the attendance review, just I, my recommendation would be that those two items be tabled and approved at the beginning of the year, the new year with the new council, because they're the ones that are going to be dealing with that, and they're the ones that you're going to have to look at the schedules to see if any conflicts are there. So it was just, you know, in looking over the agenda, I saw that and I thought, well, and typically those are items that we deal with in the first meeting in January, first or second meeting. So that'd just be my recommendation that we table that and let the new council and mayor have an opportunity to review that stuff.
So we, I don't see.
So, Mr. Mayor, on the appointments or the item I, that certainly, I, I understand that. In terms of the meeting, you know, technically that first meeting in January gets set right now. I mean, just so you can even meet. So I understand your point, Councilmember Thorson. I just, you at least have to set that first meeting so that they can meet. And maybe set it through January and allow them to take a swing at it, just so that that first month is set or something like that, if you're not comfortable with the full year.
And they can always change it at the beginning of the year.
They can, they can.
We're just setting the schedule for next year, and that sets the first meeting. And then after that, if they want to change it, they could.
Yeah, you can. I mean, as you, as you know, you're on a, currently on a cycle, you know, on your, your Tuesdays and things of that nature. That's how it's been set. I don't know if you're varying from, I didn't, to be honest, I didn't review your 2023 calendar. But I understand Councilmember Thorson's point, but I would at least, I would recommend at least getting them through January. And if they want to take it up at that first meeting to alter it, they can. You know, sometimes there's holidays and stuff, although on Tuesday, you usually miss a lot of the, the Monday stuff. But it's certainly something you can do, and if they want to alter it. I think custom and practice, candidly, I haven't paid that close of attention on whether you've set your calendar in advance or taken it up on that first meeting in January. But it is, it is something you're required to ultimately do is set your meeting. The idea being that the public wants to know when your regular meetings are. You don't have to do special notices, things of that nature. So if you do it now, your second meeting, or let them finish it in January, either way. But I'd, I'd encourage you to at least think, get in through January.
We're okay with just setting January 3rd and 17th?
I have a question for City Manager. Have the newly elected been consulted in regards to this schedule?
No.
Which, again, I don't know how long your custom and practice has been to hold it on the, the Tuesdays that you're doing, but I, I think we're just carrying that forward.
And I noticed that some of the dates are taken out, you know, July 4th is out, that's gone, and then the national night out is gone. So it just follows schedules we've been doing for the last hundred years.
Well, that's where my recollection was, we would do that on the first meeting of the year. You know, we were approving the, the calendar for the year, and we did that the first meeting. But if, you know, I, I guess I'll make a motion and we approve the calendar as is, and then if the new council has issues, they can amend it.
Okay. So the motion is for a resolution adopting the 2023 city council meeting schedule. So moved by Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cole. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose? Motion carries. And then the other one is the, the commissions.
Yeah, that was just, again, you know, we're required by ordinance to review that. And typically, I would think you would have that discussion when you're looking at making commission appointments or whatever. But again, it just seems like it's more appropriate to table that for the beginning of the year when those discussions are happening. So that's the reason why I pulled it.
City Attorney, do you got any?
I don't have any advice on that. If, it's certainly not something you have to decide tonight if you want to let the, the quote, new council handle it at that first meeting in January.
Okay, let's, let it, table it? Table it? Is that?
What would be the wording of the motion? Just that we've, all we're doing is reviewing the facts, correct?
Or is that just more for factual? I don't know if that's even a motion.
If what you want to do is kick it to that first meeting in January, if there's a motion to table it till January 3rd, that would be your motion.
May I, Mayor?
Yes.
What it is, is it's a, just a report of who attended what meetings in 2022.
I don't think you're making any.
I don't think we're making any motion.
All, all I believe the way I read it is an ordinance that it has to be, we have to look at it and review it. And the only thing, the reason it was in the consent agenda is just to agree to the fact that we've reviewed it.
It's not an ordinance or a resolution, it's just information.
Information only.
I thought there's a rule.
No rule. So it's.
It's not the, I didn't read that as being the actual appointments. Correct me if I'm wrong on that.
This is not the actual appointments. This is just a, shows the attendance.
So, let me clarify. There's an ordinance that states that we have to annually review the attendance of commissions and committees. And it's in front of us here today. I'm just saying, this should be tabled when that discussion, because this clearly is a part of that discussion on who are we going to appoint to commissions and committees. Well, if you're going to make that decision, you would naturally look at, well, let's take a look at who attended meetings last year. Was there someone that missed over half the meetings? Does it make sense to reappoint them? So I'm just recommending that maybe this would make more sense to be approved or reviewed when the new council is taking in consideration those appointments. That's all.
I'm assuming they're going to be able, they, they use that document. Yep. So we don't have to make any formal motion or anything.
I don't believe you do. As Jenny's pointed out, it's something that you're required to review. So whether, whether it's on the consent agenda or an informational item, however you choose to handle it, that certainly makes sense. And I think to the points being made, that when the new council is sworn in in January, this is certainly something they can use when deciding how to make their appointments, so.
Okay, we're not going to do anything with that. Just information only, and I'll turn over to City Manager Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. Up, next up is the reports of the city manager for the departments. That was staff today, and PD has had a busy week last week, having served a couple of different warrants. So they were able to get a lot of drugs and some guns as well off of the streets. And there were a couple of good warrants that were served. One was in partnership with, well, we were in partnership with the DEA. They had a program going, and then we also had our own warrant that was served. We're also take a good amount of drugs and money off of the streets. So they were, they did a good job. Nobody was injured, so that was great.
I believe it was a nationwide thing, it was a.
DEA program was, yeah, through many states that they did serve those warrants at the same time. Lecture department's still been changing out the decorative streetlights over the years. The standards get, take a beating. They're not snow plowing or just the weather, and they've been taking them down, sending them in. They're getting sandblasted and repainted and put back out. So that's looking really good. They got a pretty good handle on that now. They'll be starting to focus on overhead line clearance, power line clearance, getting some tree trimming done, which always pays off really well for the summer storms. So they'll be doing that. Community development, finally, the permits have settled down a little bit after all of the roofs that had been done. So we're down to 128 permits pulled for last month. They're doing a pilot program. Ramsey County's reached out. They want to do a food waste program. So there'll be more information to come on that, but we're going to get involved in that. That's just the pilot program, see how it goes, and see how to move forward from that. We're one of just a couple of cities that were asked to do the volunteer pilot program, so we're going to do that. Fire department's had a busy year again. I think they had another record year for the amount of calls that they've had. Starting next year, we'll be having department heads coming up and doing reports for you guys, stats and what they've been doing for the month. And so that'll be good to bring forward to you guys. I think that's about it for me.
That's it. Thank you. Any questions for City Manager? If not, reports of council and commissions, committees, Councilmember Cole.
Short and brief, EDA meeting is next, is this coming Wednesday, the 13th, at 3:00. Short and brief, EDA meeting is next, is this coming Wednesday, the 13th, at 3:00, followed up by the Park and Recs meeting. Is, they are having a December meeting, just due to the, everything they've got going on, on 12/21 at 6:30 here in council chambers.
Councilmember Wong.
Yeah, so the Arts and Culture Commission is meeting tomorrow here at the chambers at 6:30. Recently, there are folks doing interviews for new commissioners. We're looking for two voting members, and then also two youth, non-voting members. The commission continues to develop Project Snowy, and then they're also looking at some of the activities for next year, which looks like guided painting for an adult audience, and then utility wraps on utility boxes. In regards to the Planning Commission, they met yesterday to revisit the sign ordinance again. And then we also have two outgoing members, Elaine Barton, who has served with us for 15 years on the Planning Commission, and then Mayor-elect John Monge. So we will have two, at least two vacancies on the Planning Commission coming up, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson.
I have nothing.
Councilmember Thorson. General Business, Councilmember Cole.
I have nothing at this time.
Oh.
Just other than congratulations candy.
Yeah.
Oh, surprise! Oh, wow.
Those are nice surprises.
Yes, it was. It was very nice.
Councilmember Wong.
Nothing.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, the Holiday Hop is this weekend. It's going to be a long, day-long activities, so come out and support the local businesses, and there'll be some fun things at the different establishments. I think Newman's are having a burger special, and I don't have all the information, but I think there's a website. And I want to do a big shout out to Rachel Thompson, who is our little angel, who organizes the Christmas Tree Project. She's going to serve 15 families that are of need, so they're going to be very happy on the 17th when they come to City Hall. They're going to get everything granted that they wanted. She got a ton of donations. I mean, I have to thank the community for stepping up, because this is a hard time for everybody, but some people have a little extra than others, so I want to thank her and her little elves, and she's a gem for us.
I think she was on TV.
Yes, she was. She was on again. It was a nice coverage of our town.
Good press for North St. Paul.
Yes, yep, that's all I have.
Councilmember Thorson.
Yeah, this will be my last meeting, because I have a scheduling conflict with the meeting on the 20th, so thanks to city staff for all your hard work, and thanks for all the residents and people who have supported me over the years, and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone, and good luck to the new council members and mayor.
Thank you. I have, the Christmas light-up contest is going to be, it started, and we do have some entries in. The deadline for the entries, I believe, is Monday, this Saturday, this Saturday, and then we'll start judging the following December 14th to the 18th, and we'll have a business category and a residential category. And Councilmember Peterson just told me to remind everyone that there are Christmas lights. You can come to City Hall and get a free pack of Christmas lights from the Electric Department. I believe that's from Electric.
Also have ECO kits available that we're giving out to the public. We're also doing that program with the food shelves, so they can give that to their customers as well. So it's a energy efficiency kit. You can have LED light bulbs amongst the things that are in there, so, yeah, please pick one up.
Wonderful.
And they're great bulbs.
I believe even Don Beaneck got some of these for his tractor that he's going to be going down the road with, so, hard to wait to see that, Don. Excited to see that. Just announced tonight that there's a $17.6 billion surplus that the city is going to have. I know the new city council...
City?
Eight.
Eight. I said city?
Yeah.
Oh, boy. Good job. We're going to leave you guys in good shape. Boy, Rocky, it is tough up here. It really is. So I encourage the new council, the new mayor, I know City Manager Frandl's already been in contact with one of our legislators in regards to some of that money that will be distributed out to the cities in the, in the state, so we'll be working on that, hopefully be able to get some of the money back into our pockets so that we can help our citizens and stuff that we do in the city here. With that said, thank you, Councilmember Thorson, for your service, and it's been kind of weird not to see everyone at the last meeting, but, yeah, I wish you a Merry Christmas and thank you for all you did. With that said, I motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Thorson. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.